Thanks, Carissa. Okay, so it is August fourteenth. And I'd like to call the Eastline Board of Ed regular meeting to order at six o'clock. Uh, for all those who stand, we can stand for the pleasure of the agents.
I'd like the agents to flag the United States of America. The Republic of San Francisco.
First order of business, public comment. Any public comment? Hearing none will close the public comment. Our first order of business is we do need to move into executive session to discuss the proposed custodian and maintenance contract for the two thousand and twenty-three to two thousand and twenty-six years. Yeah, is that okay? Yeah, sorry.
Yeah, we'll be.
We were just gonna stay here, sorry.
Just give up for a few minutes.
Yeah, we'll call you back. We'll get you right back in once. Yeah.
And then Chris, if you can stop the recording.
Thanks, Carissa. Okay, so we're out of executive session and we have some minutes to approve. So we have the minutes from the July thirty-first Board of Ed special meeting.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the July thirty-first special Board of Ed meeting.
I'll second that. All those in favor, any comment? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstained? Bill? And Lee, sorry, I can't see. Okay, those passed. Next, we have the minutes from the July thirty-first Committee of the Whole Meeting.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the minutes of the July thirty-first Committee of the Whole Meeting.
I'll second that. Uh, any thoughts, comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? No, Lee was there, right? Esteban? Bill, are you, have you?
He's standing, he has a stand up.
Oh, yeah, I couldn't see. I'm not quick enough. Um, okay, and so that passes. Then the third minute, set of minutes for the June twentieth.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the June twentieth Committee of the Whole Meeting.
I'll second that.
Thanks, Alisa. Any comment? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
Abstained? Jill and Candace were absent for that meeting.
Guys abstaining for the minutes.
Did you, it's up to, do you want to abstain or did you, uh, approve?
Thus, since I wasn't there, I should abstain. Is that what you're asking?
Yep.
Yeah.
I'm abstaining.
Okay, thanks Jill and Candace. Perfect.
Sorry about that.
Oh, good. Okay. Uh, now we have a number of consent agenda items.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Staying? Okay, so there's four different consent agendas. Let me just go through them quickly. So first was a proposed donation of one thousand seven hundred and forty-four dollars from the Eastline Cheerleading League. The Eastline, Eastline High School Cheerleading Activity Account. Um, so that that's great. I assume we host the league and I should, I should know more about. Oh, okay, yeah. Got it. Uh, the second is a donation, a proposed donation in the amount of six hundred dollars from the Rotary Club of Nyannick to support the math technology software programming. So thank you to the Rotary Club for that. The third item is the approval of the customs, yeah, should be custom, custom computing, a com- custom computer specialist contract for the period of June first, two thousand and twenty-three to June thirty, two thousand and twenty-four, sorry, July first, two thousand and twenty-three to June thirty, two thousand and twenty-four. Um, so that's good that we're continuing that. And then the last item was the approval of the proposed out-of-district tuition rate for regular education students for the two thousand and twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-four school year. And Jeff, if I remember, there's only replies to a couple students.
Actually, it's zero.
Zero.
For next year.
Okay.
Yeah, we put it on the sheet there so you could see, yeah. So it's, uh, there's zero, um,
Okay.
zero students next year. That could change, we'll see.
Yeah. Okay, so that's the consent agenda items. And now we move on to discussion action items personnel. And the first is a discussion action of voluntary retirement incentive plan for the secretarial bargaining unit.
Yeah, so we had talked about this a while back and moving forward with offering an early retirement incentive to both secretaries and custodians. Um, as you can see from the information, we had a handful of four secretaries, um, that, um, sent us, uh, an indication back that they were interested in, um, in taking the early retirement. Uh, we had no custodians that were interested. So, um, we're bringing that information before you for approval of the four individuals. Um, and they are all planning for their effective retirement mid-year in, uh, in January of the coming, uh, coming year. So, um, and if you recall too, uh, about that, we sent them a letter, uh, the eligibility, uh, employees had to be, uh, they had to choose their retirement date, either nine-one or one-one, um, had to be fifty-five years of age and have ten years of eligible service at these type of schools. And then they could, um, you know, take, uh, health insurance, two-person coverage for a period of two years, uh, beginning in the selected retirement month, or they could take, um, the, uh, lump sum, um, incentive amount which would be broken out over two years, twelve thousand five hundred each, each year. So again, four people.
That's a lot of, um, seniority in that knowledge.
I'm sorry, you couldn't.
It's a lot of seniority and knowledge that is leaving.
Yeah, quite a bit. Yep.
That's a lot of time served, right?
It is, a lot of, a lot of years served, you're right. That'll add to our total pot of the, when we do our, uh, our retirement party at the end of next, uh, next year. So we'll already be up around a hundred years, so. But, uh, all great people and, uh, if you approve, uh, you know, we'll, we will definitely wish them, uh, well. And now Kirby's been with us for forty-two.
Forty years, that's January. Will be forty years exactly. She started January.
Oh, four years, yeah.
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 Any questions with Jeff or any thoughts?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the voluntary early retirement incentive plan applications from the secretarial bargaining as presented.
I'll second.
Thanks, Candace. Further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstained? Okay, motion passes unanimously. Okay, next is, um, discussion action for the Eastline Non-Certified Employees Custodial Maintenance Bargaining Contract for the seven-one, two thousand and twenty-three to six-thirty, two thousand and twenty-six.
Yeah, so, um, I know, you know, discuss, which is executive sessions, this is any questions we can further, but, uh, looking for a motion to approve that. They ratified, I forgot to, they ratified, uh, on their side, so they all approved. There's six members who disagreed, but, uh, for the majority of them, uh,
How many are?
Wrong, favorite, thirty-one.
I would like to make a motion to approve the proposed Eastline Non-Certified Employees Custodial and Maintenance Bargaining Unit Contract for seven-one, two thousand and twenty-three to six-thirty, two thousand and twenty-six as presented.
I'll second.
He says second. Further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Staying? Okay, motion passes. Thanks, uh, to Candace, Alisa and Lee for, um, working on those negotiations. And obviously Jeff and your team as well. And, uh, thanks to the custodians, because they do a lot of work. If you come in, if you come into any of the buildings over the summer and the amount of work they have to emptying classrooms, cleaning the classroom, putting it back together, uh, it is, it's a lot of work. So we appreciate all that they do. Moving on, discussion action items, finance facilities, community. And we have Chris here, uh, we have a discussion action to discuss the proposed student pricing for food services, which seems to change like, uh, weekly, monthly, weekly, something. So, uh, so we appreciate you coming and catching us up on where we are on, on that.
Hello, buddy. Chris, is that mic on? Just, uh, is the green light show?
Yeah.
Right on the right side. Those there. Alright, thanks.
Hi, everybody. Um, yes, the state does like to change things on a regular basis. Um, I don't know if anybody saw the news last week when the governor had his press conference. Uh, he did release his budget plan with the, uh, sixteen million dollars that he set aside for the school food service programs. Um, so basically how it works is all students are going to receive free breakfast every day. That's where, that's what we're using the sixteen million dollars for that. So any student, no matter what their eligibility, free, reduced or regular price, will get, uh, the opportunity to have a free breakfast meal every morning for the school year.
And what's that consist of? Like?
What's that?
Is there a definition of what that consists, what?
Yes, the US, we've followed, self-followed the USDA guidelines, so it has to be, uh, whole grain products, uh, fresh brewed milk. Um, and then we can also sub in protein items like baked sandwiches and stuff like that. Uh, so it's the same structure that we were doing before, it's just, um, the state's actually going to be picking up the cost uh, that the federal government isn't picking up. So that's for, for breakfast. Then for lunch, they're going to pick up the reduced cost for the reduced students. So there is, uh, a cost that the USDA picks up for the reduced students and then the reduced students have to pay forty cents to pay for the rest of the meal. The state's going to pay that for each individual student. So the reduced students will receive free lunch also.
Uh, that's about nineteen percent of our.
That's.
Yeah, yeah. Reduced is a much smaller number, but, yeah. Uh, so that'll, that'll help those families and then our regular price students have to go back to regular price for lunch.
Yep.
Uh, with that, uh, we believe we haven't increased the prices in ten or eleven years. Um, so we definitely need to get them up to where they need to be. Uh, we're not going to jump to the level they have set for the price. Uh, they allow you to go in smaller increments. So, um, our, our combined, uh, what do they call it? Our weighted average is supposed to be three dollars and fifty-six cents. Our weighted average right now is three dollars and eighteen cents for the meals. Um, so working with Mariana and Jeff, our proposal was to add twenty-five cents to each grade level. So that would bring the elementary school to three dollars, the middle school to three fifty, and the high school to three seventy-five. And that would offset the cost and we wouldn't have to jump to that higher number right away.
So incrementally?
Yeah, we can incrementally get to that, get to that level. And a lot of it is based on our participation. So if the high school participation is higher, that'll bring that number up. So we might not have to adjust the prices at all next year, depending on where we follow that. Um, I believe with them going back to full price, that the elementary number will probably shrink again. Because now the elementary level is at the same bar as the high school. And in the past, it was never that way. It was a lot more lunchbox, you know, you have the new lunchbox and stuff. More opt to bring it from home that the parents are paying, but uh, it's still the best deal in town as far as meal prices if you're paying fifteen dollars a week to have lunch. You get all the well-balanced items.
Questions, Chris? So, um, I get, I, I did that. So, um, how much is in our reserve? Or what do we, I don't know what we call it. Is it reserve?
Yes.
Yeah, because we were all, we were.
Yeah, we still do have a larger balance, but with them going back to full price, we could go through that balance rather quickly.
Okay.
I can tell you.
Yeah.
So, second. So I guess I'm trying to hear what we're looking to do with this motion, because it doesn't say what it is. The recommended motion doesn't say what the price increases are.
Oh, oh, do you want to add the prices?
I would.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, you definitely should add.
Yeah, we can put those. So we just have to add a motion to recommend approval of the.
So are we saying three, three fifty, three seventy-five?
Yeah, yeah. That's, that would be the new price, up a quarter. Wait, roughly a quarter each, each level.
Yeah. Yes.
Uh, one question about this price increase. When would we be planning to communicate this to?
It would be immediately this week.
Yeah.
Yeah, because we are also waiting for the state to determine what they were going to do, because there were still agencies that were trying to push to do free lunch for everybody.
Right.
Um, and he just released this all this week, so we've been kind of waiting for the governor to put it forward. Because if they, they ended up doing it for free, none of this would even come to life, we wouldn't have to worry about it. Um, but now it's kind of, it was already up and waiting, now we're hurrying again. Yeah. So that's why we had to wait to bring it to you for an increase, because now we know what's actually happening.
So, two questions. So on the reserve, with them going, will that reserve start to come down even though we increase prices or?
Well, we really don't know what it's gonna. You know, there's, there's people who haven't taken their lunch in almost four years, so it's it, it's going to be a rebuilding of, of that again.
Yeah, we have to track those participation levels pretty.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and it will drop, yeah.
Yeah, exactly. You know, you're gonna.
And I assume, so my second part of that question then, which I think I know the answer, right? To keep it for one month at the old rates and then adjust in, it, it, that's too confusing.
Yeah.
That, that's what I thought. I just, yeah.
And our rates are still compared to other districts are still dramatically lower. You know, there's, there's some schools that are charging four dollars for elementary lunch right now. So it's, we're just trying to keep that number as low as we can. Uh, so if we have to tap into the reserve, we can use, you know, use the reserve tip for that, but, uh, we also don't want to draw it down and then I have to come back to you and go, hey, I need some money for next year. Uh, we'd like to
Yeah.
keep it at that.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
That's, that's safe level.
Yeah.
Did you find that reserve number?
Yeah, it's around like five hundred and fifty thousand.
That's after purchases from the summer?
Yeah, no, well, no, as of June thirtieth, I'm not counting, I'm just doing it as of the fiscal
Okay.
year, so as of June thirtieth, it's about five fifty. Um, I haven't updated the financials for the auditors, but that's roughly what it will be. So we're still and we've had some expenditures this year.
Yeah.
Equipment and everything to try to use up that balance, because last year we had a significant amount.
Like walk-in freezers and fridges that are original to the buildings.
Yeah.
So.
Our buildings are so young, the fridges can't be moved.
I like that. Yes, no, believe me, I want to make sure.
So I can find parts for him and so. For now, yeah.
Any other questions or Chris? Yeah.
Alright, I would like to make a motion to recommend approval of the price increase in student lunches to three dollars at the elementary school, three fifty at the middle school, and three seventy-five at the high school in, in accordance with federal guidelines.
I'll second.
Yeah, uh, further comment? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion passes. Thanks, Chris. Thanks for all you're doing.
Thank you, Chris.
Okay. So that closes our discussion action items. Moving on to committee reports.
Yeah, I've got a couple of, um, items I shared with everyone today, this, um, legislative, uh, on multiple-page document. Uh, so in your free time, if you want to peruse any of this, uh, you know, and Jamie probably heard and those that were, you know, the cave piece last week, probably heard some of these, but there's a lot of information. You know, in here, a lot of changes coming, a lot of special ed, um, changes, you know, kindergarten, um, age requirement, that's changing. So, um, take a look, we'll be coming back on this. We're meeting with all the applicants on Wednesday. We'll be going through this. Um, and a lot of this too is pushed out to twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-five, twenty-six, some of the changes for the coming event, so. Uh, just to be aware, more mandates, um, and so forth, but, um, a lot of these things we're already kind of doing too. The restorative practices is coming into play. We're already doing that. Um, play-based learning. We had a training recently on, um, that for multiple, uh, staff members. That's coming forth in here at the preschool and kindergarten level. So, um, yeah, so we're, we're ahead of the game in many ways in, in some of these, but, um, some other ones that we got to be prepared for. Um, so take a look at that. Any questions, you know, please let me know. But again, we'll be going through that. This is kind of the bible for a little while as we get ready for, for those changes. Um, just an update, I, I know convocation, all of our, you know, letters, our staff letter, I crafted, um, this past weekend, so we'll be sending that out later this week, parent letter. I will be sending out, we'll tie in obviously with food and service, um, the price increases there and other, uh, uh, elements. We'll be putting in our social media piece, Instagram and Facebook. So we'll be pushing those out. We've already got eight followers on Instagram.
Nice.
Yes. Yeah. Yeah, yep. Um, it's lowercase E L P with E L P S Central Office.
Yeah.
Right on Instagram? Lowercase, so, E L P S Central Off. Candace, you're following us, I think. You found it.
Dot central dot office. Are you on Instagram? Yeah. Yeah.
Is it?
Yes, I am, and I will share it with others.
I have dot central dot office.
E L P S dot central dot.
Okay, there we go.
Just put our videos out there, so, uh, for pathways.
And on Facebook too.
On Facebook too.
What about this Eastline Hope School Athletics? Are we following that too?
You can follow that.
Is it the E L P S? Yeah, starting with, you know, anything with E L P S as the first four initials is our signature official page.
That's the change. So, yes, so.
So that's. One is you, though. Yeah.
Jeff? There's someone?
Nope.
No, don't follow that. Follow that. Yeah, yeah, Jill, go ahead.
Would someone be kind enough to type those addresses out on Twitter or whatever and then?
We're gonna, yeah, we're gonna send them to you. This is just the pre.
Okay, okay.
Information. You're gonna, you're gonna get them, Jill. We're sharing them with all staff, um, all parents, so you'll be getting them and, uh, you hopefully will be one of our followers.
Yeah, our goal was to get content in there before we put it out to people, so that it was like they weren't going to empty pages. And, and, you know, so.
Exactly.
Next week will be a good week for us with new staff orientation and with, um, you know, convocation. And our first couple of days of PD, we can start getting some.
Yeah.
Content. Yeah, we're excited, yeah.
We put both the pathways videos on there, the one with the cybersecurity and then the aviation and.
Cybersecurity.
Yeah, and the aviation and, um, um, vehicle maintenance one, um, over at Stone Ranch is on there too. I didn't share that one with you by email, so check that one out if you get a chance. That's a really cool one as well.
Which one?
The aviation and, um, vehicle maintenance. One for Stone Ranch, that's another one that's happening too. So anyway, more, more will be coming on that, um, so take.
Go viral, that's good.
Thank you, I'm following now.
Thirteen, yeah, thirteen.
Yeah, exactly. Very exciting, um.
Now you're trending. Maybe a lesson from Kevin Murco, Marko, because he's really got.
Yeah, he's already got his.
You've been out there. Since we're talking about social media, Alisa and I had a conversation with Windsor on Thursday night. And they have a social media communications coordinator.
Oh, a coordinator, huh?
Oh, wow. They said it's the best thing they've ever done, just put it out there.
That would be nice, because you and I are looking at each other going, what did we do?
We are definitely not those people, but we're working on it. Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it's nice because they have a framework, right? So they, they kind of have a plan and, and, you know, I think it gives them a chance to really focus and get a little creative and a little fancy.
Yeah, yeah, definitely.
They lived to do it at scale.
He, he like, have, they've got it down. He sends them the pictures from cave and she posts them. And she does. What's this? I missed the first, the Windsor person of Dr. Hill. I have no idea what she does, but she said it's the best thing we've ever done hiring her, because she has got it all.
That's what you just, it, it just is a plot. It keeps, you know, if you've got somebody that's constantly doing it, you know. We sat today, you, me and Carissa and, you know, Kim, uh, Dave, and we just, that's gonna be our, we're it, sort of thing, so.
One thing we do, uh, I, I work is that we have a lot of student interns help with that, so they know, you know, how to get it.
Yeah, but you don't want to really get the students.
No, but like, I was supposed to, oh shit, somebody like, hey, like, what was my ideas to like get our post to go viral? And we're, I can get your students to follow them and whatnot, so I don't know, this opportunity for interest, maybe somebody like Saga or something like that, but, yeah.
My teenage daughters. Why do, what do I do? But no, you're right, Esteban, you eventually get some extra help and we'll see where it goes. We're excited about it. Uh, so that's off and running. And then, yeah, convocation is, um, a week from Wednesday, the twenty-third. Um, so if you, uh, you want to join us, uh, we'll start right at eight-thirty sharp. Uh, we usually parade into the auditorium about eight fifteen. Um, we've got, uh, this is the first for, for us in my nine years. We've got a guest speaker, Tom Verano's coming in. Um, and Tom Verano does emotion and art. So he does paintings to music and he's, he talks to base up, he, he, we found him through the PTAs, PTAs, the middle school used him and Flanders used him this past year. And we, uh, we went to one of the shows at Flanders and he was really good. So he has an hour presentation.
I heard, I, I got great feedback on him from the middle school. They said that he was absolutely outstanding, so. Yeah, I'm looking forward to it.
Yeah, really, pretty amazing. So, uh, yeah, so please come in, uh, come and join us if you'd like. Um, Eric said say a few words like at the beginning, you can, you can make it, right?
Yeah, 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 I have it in mind. Yeah, I was looking for it. I couldn't find it, but yes, I have it in mind.
Okay, great. Uh, and then we'll, we'll kind of do our usual run-of-the-mill, um, with recognizing our new staff and tenured staff, uh, pretty quickly this time because we're cutting out an hour, so. And it'll be done by ten-thirty. So I'm looking forward to it, yeah. And then, uh, new teacher, I'll let you kind of, if you want to talk about new staff. But that's, uh, that's pretty much it. So we're off and running, a lot of communications, getting ready to go out.
So, um, I can't believe it's mid-August and we're, uh, getting ready to, um, bring our, um, students and teachers back. Um, but some highlights from this summer that I just want to let the board, uh, be aware of. We had some, um, really quality professional development opportunities for a few cohorts of folks this summer. Jeff mentioned the play-based learning. That's happening as a small, um, pilot cohort with a handful of kindergarten, one kindergarten teacher from each of the elementary buildings. And then the entire integrated pre-K, um, staff and, um, some representatives from our Nova Supernovas as well as, um, integrated pre-K. So we're, we brought all of our early childhood education folks together um, under the umbrella of, um, play-based learning. And, um, the, the hope is and the plan is to, um, bring that out to all of the kindergarten classrooms in the years to come. But we wanted to start with a small group because we're in sort of a little bit of a funny, not a funny place, but a complicated place where we're looking at new curriculum and we're doing play-based learning. And I don't necessarily want to overwhelm the system with too much at once. And so we've got a small cohort doing play-based learning while the other cohort in K will be piloting the EL curriculum. And, um, within the EL curriculum, there's a lot of opportunity for play. So my hope is that they'll really integrate nicely. So we've got those two cohorts going on. So that, that was the one, um, PD. Now, there was a one-day PD. We have two additional, um, professional development sessions that will happen over the course of the year for that cohort as well as some coaching components built in, um, by an external, um, coach who's obviously who's, um, a, a professional and has expertise around play-based learning. Um, another cohort of, um, teachers who, uh, the, um, excuse me, um, participated in professional development was at the high school level. We had partners of regular ed and special education teachers, um, go to a two-day co-teaching conference. Um, it was a virtual conference and, uh, essentially we're, we're working at establishing, um, some core practices associated with those foundations co-teaching classes, um, so that we have, uh, common, uh, identified experiences for students in those courses and common assured practices that are happening in the classroom. So we're pressing the reset button a little bit there. Um, but this cohort of teachers will, um, bring their learning back to the larger, um, group of teachers who co-teach. Uh, and we'll talk about our next steps in terms of where do we want to go from here from what we've learned. Um, and Shannon Saglio, the instructional coach at the secondary level, is sort of helping to facilitate and lead that work. Um, the last cohort of teachers who uh who have participated in PD this summer are the teachers who are engaging in that E L. Um curriculum pilot. So as you know, we've, we've tried on one shoe, the My View um. Curriculum, primary resource, and the team wanted to try on another shoe. So E L was the second shoe we're trying on. And they've set, they've engaged in three professional developments. There's one more coming um at the beginning of next week um for a smaller cohort of teachers. So they'll have had probably about a day and a half worth of professional development before even school starts on the platform. So the summer actually really was a nice opportunity for them to get to know the platform, know the curriculum before school starts. Um and that pilot will run through December, so it'll be um. We'll be implementing, they they don't necessarily call them units, they're modules. So we'll be implementing two of the modules um. Between September and December and we'll regroup in December. Obviously, we'll be touching base along the way, but regroup in December to identify. To what extent did we feel that so the resource aligns to our values and our priorities that we've identified. So that happened in the way of PD. We've had a significant amount of curriculum writing continue this summer. Uh with approximately sixty-five teachers involved in curriculum writing across multiple departments on various levels. Um the uh stop date for that was last Friday. And so um at this point now, I'm. Having my final meetings with folks and getting into the curriculum that was written to review and provide feedback. And we'll provide some time at some point over the course of the first month and a half of school for teachers to. Talk and meet around the curriculum, what's been developed and um establish a plan for implementation this year. We have new staff orientation next week. Um one of my favorite times of year is welcoming new folks into the district. I think that's a very, very important component of becoming a member and team member of Eastline Public Schools. We take it very seriously. So it's a day and a half of professional um. I it's, some of it is professional development, but it's really an opportunity to network and onboard. And so the first full day is with any new staff member who's been hired in. Um that's anyone who was hired in over the course of the year, last year after the new staff orientation, as well as anyone hired in after the end of the school year. And then um the second day is just with certified staff, at which point they start with us. We talk about instructional priorities and then they're. Connected with a building-based buddy. They go back to their buildings. They meet with the building principals and they do sort of a building-based orientation. So that happens next week.
You have a question? How many staff are we looking at for new staff orientation?
So right now, the list on the spreadsheet is about sixty staff members. But that is all staff members who have been hired since the the last orientation. Uh we do not make it mandatory for staff members who are returning. Um and so we're collecting our R S V Ps right now. I don't think we'll have sixty. Um but there's probably about between twenty-five and thirty who are new, new hires this year. Who I expect will attend. So. Um, yeah.
One quick call up to that.
Yeah.
Um are we, are there any openings that we're still hiring for?
There are.
Yeah.
Yeah, uh we still have, what's left? Um.
The math.
Just hire math at the high school, math at the middle school. Yup, math position at the middle school.
A sped at the high school.
And a special education position and technology at the high school. Or time technology position at the high school.
Do we feel pretty confident we'll be able to fill them for the first day?
Um, not the technology one, no. Hopeful for the math and for the special ed. If there's a few candidates in there, but not the tech, there's nobody for the technology.
And will Kelly, have you already reached out to Kelly to see if they have long-term subs available?
Be impressed. Yeah, and we also need a long-term, you should think too, because Kelly, reach out to Kelly to a long-term PE sub. People, there's no. Like, wants somebody to do a one-year PE position. It's not, yeah, it's not a shortage area, but we have them now, so we're we're looking at potentially tapping into a retired. Um teacher just to come back, you know, for, you can go to sixty days, used to be forty days, we'll change. Today you can do sixty days with. Anybody with a bachelor's, which helps too. But uh if we can get this retired person to come back for part of the time too, forty-five percent, then we'll see how it goes. So, yes, that's what we're we're still looking at for. So a couple of positions still outside of Paris. We have, we have Paris positions.
Yeah.
Available as well. It's gonna be impactful, I think, again, to start with the year. I know we're not gonna be filled with with Paris, so we're trying to be a little more strategic. This year and where we're focusing on the hiring aspects, like for instance.
Social media.
Yes, we do.
Well, we have thirteen followers, so we're ready now.
Share, you can share it and it can share it and it can share.
Exactly. It's it's growing, so.
People see it.
Yes.
I know New Haven, a friend of mine, she's a principal in New Haven, she's posted on social media that she's looking for math, yeah, math teachers too, so.
Yeah, we've been sending some out, especially to, you know, to every single person that's, I would get emails for certified special education, because I was a special ed cert. Still, I still get an email, want to come work and be a special ed teacher, so. Yeah, so we just blast it out to everybody. No, no, I don't, I don't want to do that, but uh.
But I mean, it's a great idea, especially if we can get linked into our alumni to follow us, because that there. They could be actually teachers or or.
Spread it to all your alumni friends.
Yes.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
We just, we just hired a two thousand seventeen graduate this morning. Her position, yeah. Yeah, yeah, it was weird, because somebody that, you know, graduated was here, we, I was here too, it's kind of neat, so to see her again. Um, that's great. Yeah, so, yep, Caroline Mackey, so we're excited that we're back.
Caroline?
Yeah, yeah, yup.
Oh, yeah, I saw her on on the personal.
Yup, she's gonna be a special education teacher at Flanders, so. We are excited, yeah, so that's always nice.
Mario?
So I'm working on uh year-end, obviously, for June thirty, twenty twenty-three. Um I have the. Uh E F S report, which is due September first, which is basically, you know, uh report due to the state that used to be for some of you, the old E D O one. They changed it and basically just kind of, you know, I have to categorize our expenses in certain categories in order to upload it to the state. Um for various schedules and um we actually, we are moving along on munis. Um we are. Hoping um go live date of July first for our um general ledger counts payable. And then January first of twenty twenty-five for payroll. Um so um I know it sounds like a long way away.
January twenty.
Yeah, so it'll be six months later.
And what did you say was the first one?
July first, twenty twenty-four, so next July, next this whole year, we're, we'll be on the new accounting system. So I don't know if anyone has any questions going into that.
So that ends the administration report.
Can you go back to committee reports?
Yeah. Kate?
Yes.
Yeah.
So leadership was this last week. Um, and I have to say that it was really, really informative. Um, they actually changed my mind on how I look at AI. We had a really, really huge AI discussion. Um, and it completely changed how I thought about AI, because I was like, no, no, no.
Are you thinking maybe, maybe, maybe?
Now I'm thinking like they're giving all these examples on how they use AI, and I thought it was a great tool. Um but they are help, doing it to help write curriculum.
Mm-hmm.
Um, teaching, it was just the way that it just goes on and on. I'm not going to read all the details, but it was just. Really, really interesting. Um and one of the board of ed members from Essex, so they're regional, so he's on two boards.
Yeah.
They have it weird, but he has a website, lawn.tv slash AI explained. Where he explains all the ways that educational uses of AI, which I haven't gone to yet, but.
What is it?
Lawn dot TV slash AI explained. But he um, the the speakers were really, really good and I definitely had a shift in my thought process on AI. So that was something I learned, yay. Appreciate you sharing that. It's something that Gil and Shannon, who are instructional technology coaches, have been working on this summer and coming up with an action plan. On professional development and awareness. Um we talked about sort of a scaled approach, right? We first need to teach our adults about it so that then they can learn how to teach students about it. And we have some work to do from a values and a philosophy perspective as a district, so they were working on developing an action plan around that. That will bring to the tech committee in the fall, so, which is awesome.
I, and I, I just, so I'm um. On a committee at work, looking at generative AI and how to use it. And so I have some. Slides about the kind of goods and bads and stuff and some things that might be helpful and I'm happy to talk more, because I'm learning a lot.
Yeah, that'd be great. It'd be interesting to know what it looks like in the the corporate world too.
We're, it's in a, because everybody's so worried about, so we can't, so we have our own. Generative AI tool. We work with Microsoft because we don't want to put our information out on. The public domain, so, and right now it's not even learning. So it's just, so we're really at its infancy. So if you just think about where it is. Even corporate America is a little bit at its infancy of how to use it, um but we're trying to move quickly.
Yeah. So Kate does have some roundtables coming up on AI in the month of September, so always keep an eye on your emails.
Okay.
Um, but I took tons of notes on it. There was also a nice discussion on controversial issues and how to deal with them. As board members within each other and with the public. Um so that was really, really interesting. And again, they had wonderful, wonderful student speakers who gave a lot of their feedback on how they feel about AI. And other things, but it was really, really interesting. I don't know, Lisa.
I agree with uh your, your whole debrief, Jamie. I do know that you took better notes than I did. Um and they were really timely topics. The AI, I thought, um, you know, a couple. Um, one of the takeaways, I think, was there um. Kind of, it throughout the, the talk and then the Q and A, it kind of continued to circle back to. The importance of asking the students or the teenager or that generation. Um included, you know, to kind of include in some of those discussions. And then, you know, it, it is so new. Um that uh it was a nice opportunity, I think, to. Um, you know, hear how districts are uh how they're looking at this, um you know, kind of through. Through, through what lens, the um the kind of programming that might be um used with this, different options. Uh so, so yeah, I think that the topics were, um the topics were, you know, kind of spot on. It was uh definitely informative. And then um there was a pol- just a comment about policy and uh. There, uh there are districts, right, that include on their agenda item for every action item, they include policy. Number or policy numbers for it um each of the action items. And so it. You know, kind of people are not super familiar, I think, but there was uh just kind of a raise your hand full from other boards that um were doing this. I thought it was maybe like ten percent or so. Um but uh. You know, I think so from a legal standpoint, right, it was encouraged, but then there's all the other pieces around. Um, you know, is the juice worth the squeeze and. Um, and you know, I think we uh cite our, you know, our policy when. Um, you know, I think it it always goes back to policy, uh but that was one uh. Um one practice that a number of of districts are doing, so just to share that.
Thanks, Elisa. Thanks. Jamie, any questions for Jamie or Elisa? That's great. Thanks for the readout. So we move on now to board comment and future agenda items. And just one comment on the future. We, we are now starting to include future agenda items. That aren't from like nineteen seventy, so we're, we're try, we are trying to keep a list. And we do have, Carissa's has been working on a document that kind of lays out our meetings for the year and. Who's gonna cut, you know, someone Deb's gonna come or. Uh, Claudine, Claudine or the elementary school uh principal and stuff. When the A D is gonna come, when Chris is gonna come, when Chris is gonna come. Uh and and trying to lay out, so we have some kind of structure and getting them in more frequently. And then we're gonna try to keep some of those bigger agenda items and make sure that we keep them on our radar. So if you have, as you think about kind of big meaty uh items or or things you want to discuss. You know, we'll try to get them into this, so we, you can see that we are working to get these into the next and upcoming meetings. Board comments, go ahead.
I just want to say thank you to everybody who came the national night out. It was awesome. It wasn't as hot as last year. It was nice tonight. It's only, I saw Jeff. I think that was, I think I saw Olivia. But it was, I saw Candace. And I think that's it. It was fun. It was nice. Lot of people again. Um it was a great night. People didn't want to leave at the end. We were packing up and people were still having fun playing, so it was a great night. Just thanks everybody who showed up and supported us.
Nice of you. That's a great spot for it, too.
It's a perfect spot for it. The only problem we ran into was football practice.
Oh.
Because they, players couldn't loop, they tried to pull in and there was nowhere for them to loop around to get out. And the parent pickup, that was, you know, those are our two problems with parent pickup and football practice parking. So, but besides that, it was a great night.
Other comments? Right. Uh go, go ahead.
Are, are you?
Whoever's online, I didn't.
Yeah, it's Elisa. Um, I wasn't sure if there was someone in the room speaking. I didn't want to overspeak. Um just, I, was this circling back to your first comment about um agenda items coming up? Is, is this the right time to?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Um, one is uh. An earlier discussion on the calendar, um like about the, the uh district calendar, kind of before. Little bit earlier than we have to actually set it. Um, and just kind of thinking about that because. Because here we are, you know, going back to school and I think um there's, there's a. A lot of interest in, in the calendar and um you know, I know we will um deliberate. Later, I'm not sure what, exactly which meeting that is. Um but to have just some uh preliminary discussion.
Yeah, yeah, we can, we, yeah, typically comes out, you know, that January timeframe, but some reason why. It did, yeah, why we couldn't try and have it, you know, November timeframe. We. Every year we get like learns, not that we align, districts don't align anymore necessarily, but we do try and work off of. The learned calendar, we usually get that in like November timeframe. So maybe right when I get that, we could try and get it on the agenda, at least have some initial discussions.
Yeah, that would be great. I think um gives us a little bit more um time to deliberate and um, you know, look at potential changes. Or, you know, what's working or what we might want to adjust.
Great. Thanks, Elisa. Did you have another one?
That's it. Thank you.
Okay, okay. It sounded like you had too. Okay, thanks, Elisa. Bill?
Right, I, you brought up the AI thing and I think that needs to be. On our agenda. I think it is an incredibly powerful tool, but I also think that we. If, if school systems are not teaching the responsible use of AI. I don't think that's one of the things that's happening in every house. Um and I think it's really. As, as my biggest concern, when I listen to people talk about AI and, and their concerns. Is that it is a powerful tool to, for disseminating misinformation, which we already have too much trouble with. So um it, and it's a powerful tool for good as well, but if, if we don't, if we're not the ones ahead of this. Teaching kids how to responsibly use it, then. Who is gonna be doing that?
Yeah, we should try and filter that back onto the agenda for some, maybe do some of the presentations too. We could try and tap, we'll talk with the principals about some discussions. Yeah, we should try and build to that, add on to the agenda for some, maybe do some of the presentations too. We could try and tap, we'll talk with the principals about some discussions. You know, on that.
We kind of see how it impacts at all levels, right? You mainly think it starts like, high school gets kind of scary-est for me. But there's got to be some good use also as you, the more.
Well, I know college kids are using it all the time, all the time.
Oh, yeah.
And, and um.
Not responsive either, yes.
Right. And, and I think that if, if, you know, you know, the kind of cat got put out of the bag and who talked to those kids about how you should be using this prior to them going to college? Nobody.
Yeah.
And their peers are saying, oh, yeah, you can get all the answers for this online test and da, 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 and whatever else you can do. And there's a lot of yeah, a lot of not good things happening with it already. So I think, you know, that we, we can't wait to let it solve itself. I think we got to be part of the solution.
Thanks, Bill. Laura?
I was just going to express some of my concerns about the AI with all the education fees that I still look at. But there's a lot of good that can come out of it. But there's also, if you look at those research and the experiences coming out now, they're seeing there's a lot more damage that can be done if it is not monitored appropriately. Which is, I'm, I'm really torn on it right now.
Yeah, yeah, it's a good, it's a good phrase for receiving caution.
Okay, any other board comments? We do have committee of the whole meeting right after this. To hopefully finalize our goals.
I'd like to make a mention to adjourn.
Yes. I heard that. Uh, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye, aye.
Aye.
Both.
Same. Okay. Meeting is adjourned and now we will move to the committee of the whole.